Welcome to week four of our book study on practicing our faith by Dorothy Bass. Faith takes practice, and if we are to follow Jesus, we have to practice what he taught. So tonight, we are focusing on chapter six, Keeping Sabbath, which builds on last week's chapter, Saying Yes and Saying No. So what you'll notice this week is this call to Sabbath, it's not just a Christian call. We find Sabbath in Christian faith, in Jewish faith, in the Muslim faith. There is this weekly holy day. And if we're going to observe a weekly holy day, we have to say yes to some things and no to other things. So we're excited tonight to be joined by Kim Blas, who's the Executive Director of External Affairs at Marietta City Schools. You might recognize her face. She's been around a bit in our FPC community. She's also been an invaluable partner with Club 330 and with our more recent Food Bank outreach. I think both of those programs, I'm so grateful that Kim has been involved. It feels like she's helped encourage us and keep us on track with both of those. Also with us is Becca Yan. She is the Ministry and Membership Coordinator for our church. You might recognize her too. She grew up in this church. She's been an integral part of our staff for the last seven years. And Becca has been trying for an intentional Sabbath practice. So she can kind of tell us what that has looked like recently. So we welcome everyone who's joining us online. We're excited you'll be part of the conversation. If at any time you have a question, just type it into the chat on either the webinar or on the Facebook Live, and we'll get to as many of those as we can.
Thank you, Cassie, and thank you, Kim. Thank you, Becca. I'm very grateful to you both, just like in general, because I think you're wonderful people and you contribute so much to the life of our congregation already. Thank you specifically for being with us tonight and for sharing your wisdom with us and being willing to be a part of this Sabbath conversation. Last week, we dealt with chapter five of the book, Saying Yes and Saying No, which had a lot to do with setting boundaries and keeping business under control so we can kind of make healthy decision making. As you said before, Cassie, that that chapter really leads right into this one. Saying yes and saying no, we have to say no to some things in order to keep, in order to observe the Sabbath. Cassie, as you read this chapter, what were a couple of key points or themes that really stuck out?
I think the first thing that struck me was that she goes into an explanation of why we have a Sabbath. Like, why is this even a thing? And what you might remember is it shows up in the Ten Commandments. What you might not know is that there are two places that the Ten Commandments show up in Scripture. And in both of those places, the command to observe the Sabbath is the central command, and it's the longest one. I mean, you can just see it if you opened your Bible to that. There's this long explanation given in both places on why you should observe the Sabbath. But funny, the explanations are different. So in one account, the Sabbath is a day to rest, to remember how God rested after creation. In another account, the Sabbath is a day that helps the Israelites remember how God delivered them out of slavery in Egypt. So you rest because you can rest now, because you're not working seven days a week for Pharaoh. So this practice of Sabbath keeping is rooted both in holiness, becoming more like God, and social justice. You know, doing justice to those who've been oppressed and overlooked and pushed down. So what I like that you touch on that, but I wanted to help us think about this a little more. When we practice Sabbath, then we practice holiness. So we focus on how we can be more like God, how we can have relationships, a relationship with God and with one another. And so we also practice social justice. So the social justice, I'm sorry, I'm getting confused here. When we practice Sabbath, we practice social justice, and the social justice piece is our relationship with one another. So no matter what that person's status is, or their rank, or their paycheck, that person is a person first and foremost. And the Sabbath day is like a leveling day, because we're honoring the image of God that that person's created in. So it's a day when those trappings of society shouldn't matter the same way. We come together all as people, all as faithful people, who are just, you know, trying to get better and trying to make the world a better place. So one thing that you might not know is that this idea of Sabbath isn't just about the once a week observance. It's also woven into many different instructions that God gives in the Old Testament, which include having a Sabbath year. So every seventh year, you're supposed to let your land lie fallow. And you might have heard about that, but it's connected to the idea of what Sabbath is. It's a day of rest, but it's also a day to root deeper and to regenerate and to not have to produce in the way that you're producing those other six days or the other six years. There's also this idea of the seven, the seven of the seven, the seven times the seventh year, which is the Jubilee. And if you've ever heard of that, this is a year when everything is leveled. And it's not just that the land lies fallow. It's like debts are cut, they're written off. People are set free. Land is reapportioned, which is a big, big deal. If you're in agricultural society, this is the Bible's response to generational poverty. So all of this is connected to this idea of Sabbath. And Sabbath reorients our relationships with one another. And of course, it reorients our relationship with God. So it's about nurturing holiness. And the most obvious way we do this is that we go to worship on Sabbaths. We set aside a time. We remember God. We give thanks for what has been given. And we just rest in what is trusting that God is going to provide enough for us. So when we stop trusting God with this, we get tempted to break that Sabbath rest, because we let our work encroach thinking, well, maybe I can do a little more. And that's, that's a lack of trust that's coming out. So those are the two big things I saw. The last thing I noticed was that the commitment to Sabbath is a communal commitment. It's not just, you can do it by yourself, but I don't think it's intended to be done alone. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. It's really important that our lives are arranged in a way that supports a Sabbath practice. And that might mean that we need, we need our families and our community on board with that, and that we need to at least find a community. If you're not practicing Sabbath on a Sunday, maybe you find some other folks that are practicing it in the way that you are, so that you have that community around you.
Cassie, those are, those are really strong points. Thank you for summarizing the chapter so well. I'm especially interested in just like this idea of Sabbath keeping as a reset or like the Bible's answer to generational slavery or generational poverty. Did, this is a Bible scholar question. I heard one time that the Jubilee year actually never happened.
Yeah, there's debate.
There's, hey, we don't want to go down that rabbit hole. Let's talk about Sabbath keeping and why it matters for us right now today. Because I think this is such a, this has such tangible application for us and for our busy lives. I will often do premarital counseling with couples. I'll always do it with couples before I do their wedding. And we always talk about money and how much conflict money can cause in a relationship, because it is a fixed resource, like you only have so much of it and how you, how you manage it, what you do with it. All of that matters, and it causes stress and friction. But another fixed resource is time and how we manage our time, what we do with it. This also causes friction. We can become so busy and have such chock full lives that we lose sleep. We don't set aside time to grow in our relationships with God. We don't set aside time to strengthen our relationships with our spouses, with our family, with our friends. We don't, sometimes we, we, we just, it's like we're in time debt, but there's not a credit card. So we just run out of it. We don't manage it well. All of these things are coming to mind as I think about Sabbath practice, because it just seems like something so relevant, so needed. But a lot of us bring to Sabbath some negative baggage or some negative past experiences. Maybe keeping Sabbath is nothing more than an inconvenience, like when you're trying to buy beer on vacation on a Sunday at the beach, and you hit that blue lawn, you can't buy beer, and it makes you frustrated. Or, or maybe there are some in the church who remember that they couldn't go see a movie, because the movie theater was closed on the Sabbath. Kim, I think you, as a Jewish person, have a different experience with Sabbath keeping than all of that. Before you, before, what I really want to know is like, what it was like to keep Sabbath for you growing up? But before you do that, we all know that there are all kinds of different Christians, like Presbyterians, Methodists, on and on and on. Obviously, there are also a lot of different kinds of Jewish traditions. What branch did you grow up in and how did you observe Sabbath growing up?
Okay, so hi, everybody. So I grew up in, I guess, what you'd call the conservative branch. So they're not really denominations in Judaism, but in America, there's several branches. But the three key ones are Reform, Orthodox, and Conservative. And I was brought up Conservative. Each branch is a little bit different in terms of the languages they use, the prayers, the liturgy, the different interpretations of the Bible. But Conservatives kind of in the middle. It's kind of a bridge between the more liberal interpretation of Reform and the more traditional aspects and trappings of Orthodox. And the synagogue, I grew up in Atlanta. It was primarily second and third generation Eastern European Jews. And so it was a big conservative synagogue. There was a bunch of us, big Jewish community in Atlanta. So yeah, that was the upbringing I came with. I had members of my family who were Orthodox, members who were Reform, but our family was Conservative.
Kind of a bridge in between the two.
Exactly, between the old world and the new.
Got it. And so as someone like with a, with a foot in the old world and the new, what was the Sabbath like growing up? And was it?
Well, like I said, I grew up in a, I went to a Jewish day school. My community I grew up in was pretty Jewish. All my friends were Jewish. And so every Friday, we got out of school early because of Shabbat. That's the Jewish Sabbath, which obviously falls on a Friday into Saturday night. We'd go to my grandmother's every Friday night with all my cousins, my great grandparents, my entire family lives in Atlanta. I have a huge family. You know, we'd light the candles, we'd say their prayers, and we'd eat, and we would just hang out. It was like, it would be a holiday, like every Friday night. I have no recollection of never not being there on a Friday. I don't remember my dad ever saying he was tired. I don't remember my brother ever having baseball practice. It was just something we always did. You know, but the funny thing is, as my friends would attest, the fact that me talking about Shabbat is actually pretty funny, because my family was not as observant as some of my friends' families. So I had friends, you know, who didn't use electricity on Shabbat. They didn't cook. They walked to synagogue. We were not that family. And if I'm honest, we did not go to services on Saturday morning all that often. But Friday night was our, was our thing with family growing up.
Kim, I'm so interested in this, because what you're describing sounds to me more like what I'd associate with like a family cookout.
Yeah.
Like something, you did designated family time that's not optional, and everyone loves it.
It was not optional, correct. It was, we did it every Friday night till my grandmother got remarried and moved to Savannah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, and the result of that is a closely connected family? Like, what are the, what are the effects of that?
Yeah, I would, I would say a closely connected family, very close to all my cousins, lots of shared memories and stories of, you know, doing goofy things on a Friday night and just hanging out, right? You know, my cousins will have different perspectives, because their families were a little bit more observant than ours. But it's a, it's a very strong memory. And yeah, I mean, it was, it was Friday nights. That's what we did.
That is so cool. Thanks for telling us about it.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Kim, how are things different now? So your grandma moved to Savannah. You are not in the same community now, I'm guessing, right? What's it look like now? Or how's that different?
Yeah. Well, I'd say the key, I mean, one of the main things that's different now is obviously, I moved to Marietta. I married someone, you know, outside of my faith. My husband's Episcopalian. And so obviously, that brings challenges, and my life is a lot more secular now than it was growing up, to be fair. But, you know, since I've had kids, it swung a little bit in a different direction. So I do belong to a small synagogue here in Marietta. It is tiny, like really tiny. And while we don't do Shabbat services at home on Friday night, like some of my family, I do go to services with my daughter, especially on Friday nights, because she's preparing for her bat mitzvah. And so pre-pandemic, we would go pretty regularly on Fridays. And to be honest, sometimes I really didn't feel like going. I'd come home from work. I'd be tired. I wasn't in the mood. She'd be excited to go, and so we'd go. And I have to say, like, once I was there, I always was glad I went, right? Like, once I was there, it's like, oh, this is great. And I loved hearing her chant the same prayers that I had learned as a child and seeing her run around with her friends from Sunday School. And I realized, while it was a different experience than I had growing up, it was still, this was going to be the memory that she had, you know, looking forward. And so, you know, it was neat. And one of the things that's, I think, cool about the synagogue I go to now, like, we do have services on Friday nights instead of Saturday mornings. And that's a point to the fact that in this community in Marietta, Saturday mornings are busy, right? Kids have soccer practice. They've got baseball. People are running around. And so the congregation decided to do Shabbat services on Friday night. And so it's a little bit more intimate and more casual, recognizing that most people would be doing this at home with their family instead. So there's what we call an O-Neg service afterwards, where, you know, people bring desserts. It's like potluck every Friday night with desserts and fruit and wine. And you hang out and you socialize like you would do at home, but you do it at the synagogue. But it's a nod to the fact that it's much more, you know, it's a different world now, at least not everywhere. But.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, I don't know, that, that whole idea of just having that time to hang out with one another, whether it's your family or it's your faith communities, I don't know. That's, there's something really special about being able to look forward to that in every week. Or I guess the beginning of every week is what it becomes, the beginning of the week. So I think just across the board, the idea of Sabbath, whether it's that consistent gathering or it's that moment, you know, that time of just resting, cutting, you know, cutting loose from the week, the work week is always really nice. And a lot of us, in theory, would love it, like if we had our Instagrams, that would be our like, yeah, this is my life goals, hashtag goals. But no one seems to be able to maintain it. Or I should say that, because some people do. Becca has. Becca, how, how did you get inspired to take this up as an intentional practice? Because it does seem hard to maintain.
And so honestly, for a while, I've been praying that God would give me more love for Him. And at the end of last year, I wouldn't say it dawned on me, like, but it, it kind of clicked for me that God says, if you love Me, you'll obey My commands. And so I started praying, well, where am I disobedient? Not in a, to gain God's approval, but I chose to start practicing the Sabbath out of gratitude, obedience, but out of a gratitude for what God's done for me. So that was really how I started, was just wanting to be obedient. And I really didn't think that I would look forward to it, because it, it's not in my nature to rest. But I have started looking forward to it every Friday as I'm doing the laundry or whatever chores I want to get done before. I've been doing Sabbath on Saturday. Before Saturday, I'm like, it's so nice. I always look forward to it now, so.
That, that's like a common theme between you both, isn't it? Like, this was something you look forward to. I, I think that's wonderful. Kim, that, for you, that had a lot to do with looking forward to who you are going to keep Sabbath with. And, and as we were, as, as we were discussing this before, Cassie, Cassie pointed out that, that God doesn't just command Moses to keep the Sabbath, but, but like the people, Israel, I want you to keep the Sabbath. Kim, there's a word you mentioned before that, that was unfamiliar to me. You hadn't mentioned it tonight, but when we were meeting before. A minyan. What is a minyan? And in what sense does a community make keeping Sabbath easier?
Yeah, so a minyan is basically like a quorum of 10 people who are required for prayers. Like, in the Orthodox tradition, it's 10 men, 10 adult men. In Conservative or Reform traditions, women are included too. But it's the minimum number of people you have to have for certain prayers and certain occasions. So whereas I could pray by myself at certain times, on certain holidays, or for certain events, I have to have 10 people together for me to do certain prayers. And so one of the things that's nice about, you know, I mentioned the small synagogue that I'm a member of, like, you know, in the back of your mind, you know that if you don't feel like going that night, there might not be 10 people there. And so then other people are restricted from doing their prayers. So the whole idea of, of community and being a part of a community is like, it's integral to everything, including the ability to pray. So it's, it's, you know, it's hard to explain the importance of it in Judaism, but it's, it's everything. Which is why you.
Oh, my goodness.
Communities, like all, you know, Jewish people often live together, because it's a combination of reasons. One, you need to walk to the synagogue in traditional communities. You need to coach your meat market, because you have to buy certain foods. And so there's reason, you know, your kids are in certain school together. So there's a reason you see that community. But even in less traditional Jewish communities, it's still important, because there are certain things you can't do unless you have 10 people.
I never, so, so I, okay, I'm just learning all kinds of stuff. If you didn't show up, the other people couldn't do the.
Certain things.
They couldn't observe. Wow. Okay, so, so you need the other people, but the other people also need you.
Exactly.
Becca, this is, this is a question for you. You know, you're a busy mom. You're working a full-time job. You're talking about a whole Sabbath day. How do you do it? Who helps you? Are your kids in on this? What, how is this, how is this even possible?
Um, well, I think starting during a pandemic has probably made it easier, because we don't have activities to go to. But my kids know that I don't work on Saturday, but to be honest, and this was intentional, I didn't wait until I had it all figured out till I started practicing the Sabbath, because I just would never have started. So really, they don't, they don't help me. They don't really understand it. I think it is the ideal. It's my goal that they'll be involved, and my mom, who lives with us, will be involved. But that, just to be honest, that's not part of it right now, because I just wanted to start. So, but yeah, but I absolutely believe that that is the ideal, the goal. That's the command, is that it is a communal thing. So I'm going to get there. But maybe that's an encouragement to other people, that you don't have to have it all figured out. You can just, just baby steps.
Just start. Yeah, I love it. Do, um, like, like, as, as we were getting ready for this, you said that your mom was trying to, like, keep your children from entering the Zoom call. Does your mom, does your mom, like, protect the Sabbath day? Does she help you?
Well, she's watching right now, but I'm going to say no. I do the chores that I do beforehand, but she helps me every day. So it's not that my mom's not helping me, but particularly to do the Sabbath, no. But, but I spend more time with her on Saturday, and I spend more time with my kids on Saturday. But I'm not regulating her, and she's, you know, if the laundry didn't get done, it just sits there. If, if I'm supposed to, I don't mow the grass. But if I were going to mow the grass and it didn't happen, it just wouldn't happen on Saturday. It would just happen another day.
And you're okay.
Well, yeah, yeah. And the point's not to make more work for other people. The point is, you know, so I don't want her to be picking up my slack on Saturday.
The point's not to make more work for other people. That's a great line. Have you found yourself just being okay not folding the laundry or not being okay if something's not done for a day?
I definitely catch myself every Saturday. Like, if something's clean, I'll be like, I'm gonna, nope. You know, it's like I catch myself, I'm not going to do that, or the trash is full. And I'm like, I'm just going to take this with me. And so I catch myself all the time. But, I mean, there's grace. The Sabbath was made for men, right? It was, it's made for us, so.
Yes. Something really important said that, Becca.
Yeah, somebody. But, um, yes, I have, I have caught myself, but it hasn't been this overwhelming urge to do laundry or anything. It's just a, it's such a habit to, to do all the time, that it takes practice to untrain that.
Yes. I love it. Thank you.
Yeah, so I was thinking about this chapter. I remember that, I grew up in Macon, Georgia. I knew that already. I didn't remember that part. But I remember that there was this, this, this rumor that Macon has the most churches per capita of any city in the world, country, state. I'm not sure what, but the joke was, when you meet someone from Macon, you don't ask, like, what do you do? Or who's your family? Those are different cities. You ask, what church do you go to? And that's how people get placed. This, you know, they figure out who you are and who your people are. So Christianity was everywhere in my childhood, growing up. I remember Wednesday nights, there was no homework some, some weeks. Sunday mornings were very quiet, because everyone just assumed those were the times that you'd be at church. But obviously, and this is a very, okay, this is very specific to Christianity. Because, Kim, your experience could have some of that, because you were in a Jewish school and you were going to synagogue as a child. But American culture isn't as, was not always built around other religions as much, I think, as Christianity. And so, but it isn't necessarily that way now. So in some ways, it is, like, the work week is still Monday through Friday. The school week is Monday through Friday. But there's all kinds of stuff that happen over the weekend. And there's, you know, Wednesday night's another night for homework, and Sunday morning is another morning. You could be playing soccer or baseball or whatever else. So if we don't stop the encroachment, it's just going to, our time's just going to be pulled in these other directions. And so one reason we let, I think we let Sabbath be squeezed, is that we don't value the rest. Like, we, at least if it's me, or I would say, our culture, more generally, says, you put your head down and you work hard. And even the Protestant work ethic is like, what idle hands are the devil's plaything? Like, there, there's this idea that you shouldn't be sitting still. And if you're not sitting still, you're, maybe you're producing. But Sabbath is about not producing. And at least, for at least that period of time, reorienting, reorienting ourselves away from this economy of production and moving more towards God's economy, which is about being valued and being loved and resting and trusting. So Becca, you had talked earlier when we were prepping about your to-do list and that you love your to-do list. And so I'm just wondering, what have you, you know, you're, you're trying to practice Sabbath. You're trying to ignore the laundry. What have you learned about your identity since you started this?
Um, well, I, yes, I really do like my to-do list. And I feel like the most challenging thing has been to recognize that my worth was so tied into becoming a better version of myself, or my, like, my house needs to be better than it was the day before. And, you know, my kids need to know more than they did the day before. So really, I did question, am I worth anything if I'm not doing anything? And I really did struggle. And I might, I might still struggle with feeling like lazy and getting to the end of the day and be like, I didn't, I didn't do anything productive today. And then realizing, you know, I've realized that that's the point. Like, the point is to not produce. The point is to not be productive in that sense. So yes, and I've definitely learned and recognized, and I'm so grateful that all those tasks are still there the next day and the world keeps going. It's definitely humbling and has made me more grateful that the world doesn't revolve around me. And thank God. God is our provider, and I still have enough of everything. And amazingly, I have enough time the other six days of the week to do all the things that have to be done.
Can I add something to that, Cassie?
Yeah.
Becca, one of the things, you know, you mentioned the, you know, the finding it hard to sit still. I think the irony for me is that I learned a lot more how to sit still from my husband's family, because we would visit them in Mississippi. After we'd go to church, we'd go to his grandmother's house, and we would eat, and then we would do nothing. First, I was like, what are we doing? Why are we sitting here? We need to be doing something. It drove me crazy. But then, like, they would rest and they would nap, and they would just sit. And it, well, at first, it was hard for me to adjust. It became like my favorite things to do when we visited there, because that's how I got to know, you know, his grandmother and his aunt, and hearing stories and looking at photo albums and just sitting there and being and not rushing off to someplace. And that was really hard for someone like me, because at first, I was like, what do you mean? We're going to sit around and look at this garden all afternoon in the middle of Mississippi heat? But those were like some of the best, you know, memories of visiting with them. And it was all because they did. And it was all because they did observe the Sabbath and they, you know, they just sat around together and reflected and it was really.
Unreal. I, I mean, I'm, I'm getting so much out of this that, that I want to reclaim. Uh, I've never, so, so I've never thought of sitting around with family doing nothing as a spiritual practice. But it, but it is because that's really, that's how we rest, that's how we recharge, that's how we connect with one another. That's how we remind ourselves that our identity comes not from what we're able to do, but from, from God who created us and called us good. This has been a beautiful conversation. Um, Kim, Becca, I'm, I'm so grateful to you both. But I don't want to leave this moment that we have together without really thinking about, okay, we said some things here, um, that we need to hold on to. Cassie, uh, this has been a super helpful conversation for me as our time together this evening kind of comes to an end. What are you going to take away from this?
Well, first question before we go there, uh, to Will, are there any questions? Any questions from anyone else?
Oh, here we go.
Here we are, alright.
Thank you, Debbie Smith. What was your reaction to the author's, at, do you want to read this?
My reaction was I highlighted that part.
What was your reaction to the author's admonition that churches can be the worst violators of our freedom on Sabbath? Uh, example, committee meetings. I've heard, this is a saying that went around, um, when I first started as a, when I was in seminary, um, seminary students used to say that breaking Sabbath is the only commandment that pastors will brag about having broken. That, that to say, you know, I, I've worked 80 hours this week and had a committee meeting every night and then on Sunday I was there all day, that, that there's like this pride. It, I, I, I think, um, I agree with what the author said, that the churches can be the worst violators. Uh, sometimes our pastors are the leader in making that, um, in violating that. I know that Debbie Smith serves on, uh, multiple councils in the church and, and, and that maybe we should contact her council chairs and suggest that they move their meetings onto a different day. Cassie, what, what, you highlighted this part of the chapter.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, it's, it, well, and it kind of goes back. I, I think, I think one thing that's, that's been percolating for, I guess, half a year now since we've been kind of locked down with COVID, haven't seen a lot of people, a lot of the, a lot of the meetings we are having over Zoom. One thing I realized that has, has happened, it, it, or at least happens to me, is I can overreact to things that aren't things, like, it's not a thing. It just, it was a Zoom call and something got crisscrossed in the communication. If we were practicing Sabbath in, like, physical community with each other, so, so much of that wouldn't happen. So I, I think in one sense you become, I hate to say it this way, more productive. It's true, like, if you let your landlife out for, for a time, it will be more productive when you plant again, right? I think we can be more productive actually if we gave ourselves the chance to abide with one another, to sit and look at the grass grow and the garden grow and, um, or whatever it is. And so, yeah, so we, we could, we could stand to, to spend more time on that. I, you know, I love an efficient committee meeting. Sometimes efficient doesn't, it doesn't do everything that, that you, you need to be done within that team or within that, that body, so, yeah.
Yeah, so you're talking about efficiency here. There's the, the church, I served, before coming back to Marietta, I served at Presbyterian Church South of Nashville in Columbia, Tennessee. And that town was founded by Presbyterians who, in their, like a wagon train, moved west to Middle Tennessee. Two group, two separate groups of Presbyterians, they left at the same time, but they kind of divided because one wanted to keep Sabbath and rest and the other kept going on Sundays. And guess who made it there first?
Is it a trick question?
The ones who rested made it there first because there's got to, there's got to be something about giving yourself permission to stop that enables you to better serve the others, the other days of the week.
Yeah, don't you rest when you train for a race? You can't just.
Yeah, you're supposed to.
Run every single day, right?
Really good way to get a hairline fracture in your metatarsal.
Yeah, personal injury.
So going too fast and too hard leads to injury, maybe.
And then you're forced to rest and it's not, you know, yeah.
Great question, Debbie.
Anything else before we, we'll wrap up? Going once, going twice, alright. Motion to close the meeting. Oh, I'm kidding. Um, no, this has been super helpful. Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here, Becca and Kim.
Thanks for having us.
So many more questions. I can tell Joe's got questions. He's like, uh, we only have a certain amount of time, but would love to keep going. Things I'm taking away from it, one is this, I'm still fascinated by this idea of, of what it means to observe the Sabbath in community, whether that's a family community or a faith community or maybe it's, you know, may, you know, the book gave an example of a pastor and his wife. That was the community that, that, that we're observing Sabbath together. But, uh, deepening those relationships by just being with one another. I love, I like this idea of the Sabbath is to, is, is kind of working toward holiness and justice. And, and how are we, and maybe that, because I like having rules. So if you had to have a rule, like what's in, what's out on the Sabbath day, that could, that gives us a, a bit of a guide point. I appreciate, Becca, how you said, just start, just start somewhere. And maybe it's like, yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe you start with one thing. And, and another thing we had talked about was that, uh, there's this ongoing discernment that happens. So you say, okay, well, these are the things I'm not going to do on Sabbath. Clearly, I'm going to, I'm going to keep my laptop off. But then what, what else is considered work? And, and I'm sure, Kim, you, you, you know, some, some rules that would be, you know, for Orthodox Jews, there's a long list of things that are considered work. And I think toilet paper's involved. We don't go there. But there's, there's like a long list of things that, that this is how you, you don't turn the lights on. You, um, sorry, you don't tear toilet paper, I think, is, that's where I was going with that. But there's certain things that you don't do on the Sabbath because you're trying to make sure you're resting. But when it comes with Christianity, we, we don't necessarily look at all those different rules and we don't, we don't have the rabbis guiding us either. So it's a little bit of a, of a different animal. So thank you, Becca, for just kind of sharing what that looks like and it's okay that you just start somewhere. Um, and so that what I'm taking away in terms of my, like, my own homework is to, is to pick a day in the next few weeks where we're still in Lent and observe Sabbath for 24 hours, plan ahead to do it, uh, figure out what that means with your family, with your schedule, with your commitments that might, that may mean, and hopefully it does mean saying no to something, um, and then just stick with it. And you might want to even think ahead of time, like what, what's in and what's out? What can, when am I going to do, what am I not going to do? And then monitor how hard is it? What do you learn about your own identity? What do you learn about your own instinct to try to, you know, try to answer an email or answer a call when you're, instead, when you know, I need to put that away for now, so. So, yeah, so thank you all. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Again, appreciate Kim and Becca for sharing their experiences on the importance of keeping Sabbath. We'll be back here next week with the last discussion of the series. This is the last chapter, uh, I mean, this is the last chapter we'll talk about, is chapter 13, Singing Our Lives. And it's pretty exciting because we'll have the author of the chapter with us, Dr. Don Salyers, as well as Dr. Jeffrey Meeks, who is the Music and Finance Director at the church. And until then, we pray that God will bless you and be gracious to you and give you peace. Goodbye, everybody.
Bye.
Night, y'all. Thank you.